Good evening. Welcome to the August 4th, 2014 meeting of the City Council. Our mayor has been delayed and may yet be coming, but he has missed his flight or his flight was canceled coming off the East Coast. Last email we heard from him, he was on a bus to Boston and about to catch another flight back to Seattle. So he may be joining us, but probably not till after 7:30 tonight. So in the meantime, we're going to start off with a study session tonight on the Transportation Benefit District. Chip, are you leading this one?
I am.
Okay. So Noah, did you have anything you wanted to say beforehand?
No, just thank you. And as you saw, we had originally scheduled a hearing on and reading of an ordinance tonight related to this. As we got into the complexities of it, we decided it was probably better to do this as a study session and give the council some time to ask questions, give the staff time to then respond to those and come back later with an ordinance if that's your desire, that fits your needs. So that's why we've broken this into two pieces, but I'll turn it over to Chip.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening. We all, Ally?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you hear me now? Again?
No. Yes. I'm just wanting to do my Bill Cosby impersonation of Noah. Remember that bit? Noah. Good evening. We have before you three staff members, myself, Christina Shuck, Assistant City Attorney, and Francie Lake, Deputy Finance Director, to hold your hand through the wonderful world of TBDs. I will say that they've ended up being far more complicated than staff originally realized, and hopefully we can get you up to speed sufficiently this evening. In terms of our agenda tonight, I'll provide some very brief background explaining kind of direction we've received from the council, information we've shared with you, and why are we here tonight? Why are we teaming this up tonight rather than during the budget process? And then Christina will talk about the purpose of a TBD. Francie will then discuss revenue options with you on the TBD, that which you can do as the council versus that which requires voter approval. Then Francie and Christina will talk about the steps required to create a TBD, and then we'll bring it back to me, and we'll see council direction specifically as it relates to creating a TBD, when to do that, if at all, and what's in terms of council direction on the ordinance. Okay? So as a reminder, remember back in February of this year, there was a group of us that tried to educate the council on transportation-related issues, funding in particular, and we talked about the forecasted deficit in the Street Fund, and we talked about some options for addressing that deficit, such as you could focus on projects, you can defer, you can cut, you can scale back on projects. We talked about changing our current policies, whether it's related to PCI ratings or your congestion level of service, and that can impact cost of projects. And we also talked about a Transportation Benefit District. In terms of more recently, the TIP back in May, when we presented that to the council, we received preliminary direction from the council, it's very broad at the time, that you were willing to consider a TBD for planning purposes beginning in 2015. Well, that then sent us down the path of doing a little more research in terms of what's involved, and I'll be the first to admit that I got surprised. One of the first things we learned is that there's a six-month lag time, in essence, from when you create the TBD and you have to adopt a fee ordinance, it has to six months transpires before you actually start receiving the fee. And as you'll recall, when we originally were talking about this in terms of the TIP, we were assuming, we staff was assuming, that this would follow the budget process, that we would tee up decisions for the council in the November-December timeframe. If you were to stick to that timeframe, what we realized is you would lose out in six months' worth of revenue. That's why we're here tonight. So what we shared with you earlier this year in terms of the Street Fund is without transportation benefit district revenue at $20 per vehicle, we are projecting a $2 million deficit in our numbers in 2020 in the Street Fund. Per the adopted TIP by the council for 15 through 20, 2015 through 2020, there's a minor dip in 2019 of $362,000, and it goes back positive again in 2020. And so it's, for practical, all practical purposes, it's balanced for the six-year timeframe. That's assuming a TBD is approved by the council. It's also assumed that the fee would take effect in January, on January 1st, 2015. We've learned that we can't, you wouldn't be able to pull that off even if it were approved in September. Next. Christina? Let me just, was there one slide I missed there, Francie?
No. Maybe. No, you got it.
Okay. So again, to reiterate, the reason we're here today is simply to help you understand that if we stick with the regular budget process for creating a TBD, approving a fee ordinance, if that was the will of the council, the soonest that you could actually collect something would be July 1st of next year. You'd lose out on half a year's worth of revenue. Again, the annual estimated revenue is $350,000, so you'd lose out on $175,000. The soonest you could implement it is if you were to give direction to staff to get going in September and do the first and second reading and adopt the fee ordinance, that would allow us to start collecting the fee beginning on April 1st, so three months sooner than July 1st. With that, let me turn it over to Christina to talk about the purpose of the TBD.
Good evening. Christina Shuck, Assistant City Attorney. So with that in mind, what, talk a little bit about what is TBD and how you can authorize it as a city council. It's set forth, your authority is set forth in RCW 3673, and it specifically is to, you're allowed to create a TBD to fund a transportation improvement. The transportation improvements or improvements must be consistent with a state, regional, or local transportation plan, and necessitated by existing or reasonably foreseeable congestion levels. And with that in mind, what is a transportation improvement? The statute also defines that. It's defined as projects that are contained in a state, regional, or local transportation plan, and that can include investment in highways, principal arterials of regional significance, other things like high-capacity transportation, public transportation, or other transportation projects that are of regional or statewide significance. So that is the basic outline of what a TBD can be used for.
Let's do this. What's that? Oh. Do you want to go back to it? No. That's what was going on. He's gone.
And state law also gives some criteria that you should consider when you're selecting a transportation improvement, and those are reduced risk of transportation facility failures, basic maintenance, improved travel time, air quality, increasing your daily and peak-period trip capacity, improved mobile connectivity, cost effectiveness of the investment, optimal performance of the system, or improved accessibility.
Francie Lake, Deputy Finance Director. Transportation Benefit Districts have two revenue options that are subject to the board's approval. They can levy an annual vehicle fee up to $20, or they can levy transportation impact fees on commercial and industrial buildings, not residential, but commercial and industrial. In addition, voters can pass four types of revenue options. They can do the property tax excess levy or an excess levy for capital purposes. They can levy up to 0.2% a sales tax, and they can vote in up to $100 annual vehicle fee per vehicle that's registered, and they can do vehicle tolls.
Francie, can you talk about the additional expense for a special election? Or? I hope that we would piggyback it off of a general election.
I'm going to look to our city clerk here for a moment. I can answer that because her mouth was more full than mine. But generally, we've gotten estimates from the county, and generally, a general election would be approximately $40,000, both for the cost of running the election and the voter pamphlet, and roughly $80,000 for special election. And that, excuse me, those costs also include voter registration, so if you were to back that out of it, it might be more along the lines of 20 to 60. It just depends on when the election is held. Voter registration, yeah, voter registration costs keep going up exponentially, so you have those costs that you have to pay every single year, and then you have the election expenses, and depending on when the election is, and if you have anything else on the ballot, the cost can range anywhere from 20 to 60,000, in addition to the 25 to 30,000 we pay for voter registration.
Let's be clear, so, I mean, I certainly don't, I mean, we're going to have to pay 20,000 regardless for voter registration, so that shouldn't be included as an additional cost.
So 20 to 60,000, 20 additional thousand dollars on a general election if we have other items on the election, and up to an additional 60,000 if it's on a special election.
I think his question is that even if we had no elections, would there still be a voter registration cost?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Which is about $35,000 right now.
Per year?
Yeah, it's going up.
Okay.
Okay. In the Agenda Bill, staff proposed two different timing options. As Chip said, we originally anticipated that you would be, if you went forward with a Transportation Benefit District, that you would be adopting that ordinance in December, the fee ordinance in December. That would mean you wouldn't start collecting revenue until July 1st, and you would collect in effect half of an annual year's revenue, only $175,000. If late until December, with that loss of revenue, the Street Fund would go negative in 2018 with the current plan. If the council is interested in going faster, about the fastest you could go would be to adopt a fee ordinance in September. We would start collecting revenue April 1st of 2015, and we would receive another three months of revenue, and 262,500 is the estimate for 2015. Ongoing, we estimate that the Transportation Benefit District will generate about $350,000 a year.
About, how many households can you, how many vehicles per household, household?
Hmm. So there's between 7,000 and 8,000 households, so two to three, closer to two.
So we're talking 40 to 60 dollars per household?
Right. Probably closer to 40. Okay, let's talk about the steps that it takes to establish the Transportation Benefit District, and I'll pass this back to Christina.
So the statute has specific steps that you must do to create a TBD, and the first step is to hold a public hearing, and that requires 10 days' notice. At the public hearing, you can adopt the ordinance, and of course, here in Mercer Island, it would take two readings to adopt the ordinance, so you have a first and second reading of the ordinance. What the ordinance must include is, first of, kind of foremost, is a finding that the creation of a Transportation Benefit District is in the public's interest. You also, the ordinance also needs to define the boundaries of the TBD, the functions and the powers. And the functions and powers goes back to the transportation improvements that we talked about earlier, and then of course, the description of the transportation improvements that you're proposing to fund by the district. The governance of the TBD, it's governed by the legislative authority that establishes it, which is you. You act ex officio, which means basically by the virtue of your office, you don't have to be specifically appointed, and most importantly, you act independently as the TBD governing body, which leads us to the last bullet point, that the TBD meetings need to be separate from council meetings.
Is there a requirement of how many meetings?
There's no specific requirement. You do need to meet at least once to receive an annual report on the use of the funds, so, once a year at least. So once the, an ordinance is passed to establish the Transportation Benefit District, the board, the Transportation Benefit District Board, you all need to meet in a separate meeting to do a whole bunch of legal things. You need to adopt a charter and bylaws, which outline the purpose of the district, the powers and indemnification, the roles and responsibilities of officers, set a time and place for meetings. You'll need to elect your board chair and vice chair, or however you define your officers to be. You need to adopt a material change policy, which, a material change policy addresses how major plan changes, mostly on the project side, so major changes in cost, or scope, or schedule, will be addressed by the board. Then you also need to vote on the fee ordinance, and you may want to consider holding a separate public hearing for input on that ordinance. And then finally, you will need to adopt three interlocal agreements. One with the City of Mercer Island for staff support, one with Department of Licensing for their services to collect the fees, and one with WCIA, Washington City's Insurance Authority, for air and emissions and liability insurance. So that could be, there's, you know, you'll want to think, there's a number of ways you could do that. One big, long meeting, one maybe, hopefully, short meeting, or several little pieces to cover all of those steps to create the governance, the guiding documents for the Transportation Benefit District.
I'm sorry, Mr. W., may I, I have another question, it's kind of at the right place for it. Are you almost finished judging?
Almost finished.
Why don't you let Francie just finish?
Okay. So if you are interested in the fast timeline, adopting fees by the end of September, you could at your September 2nd council meeting, hold your first public, the public hearing and the first reading of the ordinance, and then at September 15th, you could do your second reading. And then at some date in September, after that ordinance is adopted, you could convene your Transportation Benefit District Board and work through all of those items I just covered. So, and our very last slide is for direction from council.
Okay. So in terms of feedback, we're looking for the council. This relates to the purpose of the TBD. There's kind of, boil this down, you have kind of three levels, from highest, high summary level to more detailed level. It's, you need to tie it, okay, to a state, regional, or city plan. Staff would recommend tying to all three, state transportation plan, regional transportation plan, and our city TIP, okay, which is updated annually, and that at a minimum. Next, some folks, some cities go a step more detailed in terms of what kinds of projects, arterial street improvements identified in the TIP, that's going a step more detailed. Other cities go still even further and identify specific projects. We wouldn't recommend that, but that's the council's decision. We'd recommend staying in the fair at the high level, at a minimum, like I said, tied to a state transportation plan, regional plan, and the city's TIP. Also, we need to, you decide on timing. You want to stick with the originally envisioned timing with the budget process, or do you want to kind of accelerate this and have us bring back an ordinance to you for first reading on September 2nd? If the council's interested in doing that, you may want to consider forming a little subgroup, three of you, to kind of review things, since there's a lot of little details to work your way through. And then finally, if there's any other comments, direction from the council. So I sense questions, but I just wanted to give you that kind of background in terms of the kinds of feedback we're looking for from the council.
Okay. Let's go to questions. Why don't we do just a couple of questions at a time? Mike?
Yeah, why don't you start at the other instance, I've already had a couple of questions. Or, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on this. I spoke with other folks as well, a little bit, on this specifying the transportation projects. I mean, as I look at the statute, it just, it simply says you need to specify the transportation projects. You're telling me that you could have a fairly high-level approach to this, you don't have to actually specify specific projects?
That's correct.
Yes. That is correct.
Okay. Okay, and again, I just look at the statutory language, and so you feel comfortable with that?
I'd say the majority of other cities' ordinancees that we looked at, they tie to roadway maintenance or arterial maintenance programs, because those are high priorities of the state and local plans. So that's about as specific as probably more than half of the Transportation Benefit Districts that are in existence now in the state.
Okay. Jay?
Well, along with that same question, I just see that, under purpose of the Transportation Benefit District, they must also be of statewide or regional significance. I mean, is that just, you know, keeping streets and arterials moving is of statewide significance?
Yes.
I mean, it seems very big umbrella.
And the state plans do have lots of broad goals that we could fall under.
Other question then, what kind of transportation impact fees could be assessed to commercial and industrial buildings? How would that work? What kind of revenue would that bring in? Do other cities do that?
I'll do my best with that. Some other cities do. It's usually tied with development, so you would be collecting impact fees on new development. Just being a smaller community, I think that's a pretty limited revenue source for us. I don't, and I don't have dollar estimates, but I don't think that would meet anywhere near the need that the vehicle fees do.
But that's an option if, I mean, in voting for a TBD, it would include the two revenue sources?
No, you would, you could pick one or the other, or both.
Okay. Thank you.
But also, just to clarify that, you said it would not apply to residential?
It does not.
So for most of our development in town center, which is, which is multipurpose development, we would just be able to get a, would you be able to get anything if it includes a residential component?
I don't know for sure. Probably would need some help on that. I would guess that you might be able to find some way to divide the two types of uses.
Okay. Danny?
Thanks very much. So which, what vehicles or which vehicles are actually subject if we were to vote to this? So, I mean, it's everything from, I think the obvious vehicles that are registered to a particular home or family here on the island, but then I'm thinking, if I decided to start in Debbie's rental car service, and I established my business on the north end of the island, does each and every vehicle as part of that commercial operation become subject? Another question is, I am a resident on the island, could I move the registration of my vehicles if I were a partial or whole owner of a business that resided someplace else? So can you give us a little bit more context in terms of who, which vehicles actually would be subject to the car tab fees?
I'm not sure we're going to have the answer to that question right off the top of our heads, we can do a little looking. What I do know is there are definitely some vehicles that are exempt, but there are things like farm vehicles, or more equipment types of things. There's, I guess I can get back to you on that, but I don't have the answer right now.
I did check on that a couple of months ago, because some constituent asked me that question. From what I can get off the Department of Licensing website, basically, if it's, if it's a personal car, it's supposed to be registered at your residence. If it's a business car, it's registered at the business. So if you have a personal car, you can't just put it at, you have me a lawyer in Seattle, you can't just say, "I'm registering it in Seattle because I'm a lawyer in Seattle." If it's a personal car, then it's supposed to be registered here on Mercer Island. But similarly, if you have a business here on Mercer Island, if you, you're actually operating a business from here, then my understanding is that all vehicles that are part of that business would be, would be required to pay the fee here on Mercer Island. So it's, basically, it follows, it's pretty logical in terms of the way they interpret it, from what I understand. But Christina and, we'll be looking at it separately, I gather, and respond.
Just some quick research that I've done sitting here. The vehicles that are subject to fees are passenger vehicles, trucks weighing 6,000 pounds or less, motorcycles, commercial passenger vehicles, also 6,000 pounds or less, combination trucks, tow trucks, house-moving dollies. So there's a kind of extensive list there. Exempt vehicles are farm vehicles, campers, off-road, snowmobiles, mopeds, commercial trailers, things like that.
Danny?
When we're looking at what the money will be used for, can we save that money for year after year if we anticipate a large project coming up, or is it something that has to be spent in the year that's collected, or the year after it's collected? Are there any requirements around that?
There are not that I have seen, other than you would have to be accumulating funds for the purpose that you set out for the Transportation Benefit District, and I've definitely seen that other people have done that, have accumulated funds for a project that's a few years out.
Mike? Thanks. The TBD Board, who is that? Is that us?
Yes, that's you.
Not a majority?
All seven.
It's all seven.
Oh, it's all seven?
Yes.
Okay. And the Board, or the council acting as a TBD Board, will we have the authority to increase the tax in years down the road?
Right now, the limit of what the Board can pass is up to $20. If the state legislature raises that limit, then you would have the authority to go up to whatever level the state legislator, state legislature increased the fee to. So the state, the sort of laws set a limit on how much you can levy as a board. So over, right now, current law, over $20 you would have to bend, if you wanted to have a higher vehicle fee, you'd have to go to the voters.
Okay. And I have a graph. Did that make it on there?
Do you have that graph that?
Is this for a question, or is this for? True, I'm sorry, Ally, I'm sorry, Ally. This is a state, that's for a statement. That's all I have. Thank you. So can I, I just, just, I have a couple of questions. One of the purposes is public transportation. I assume that public transportation means, for example, if the city wanted to go into the bus business, that would be included within public transportation?
I would think that was a potential use. That would be beyond the six-year transportation plan that you adopted.
No, I understand. And then the other question is, trails are specifically not included in the list, I assume the money cannot be used for shoulders on the Mercers, or bike trails, or new pedestrian trails? I guess shoulders on the Mercers may be part of our.
To be determined. Yeah, to be determined. There's lots of details to be worked out, but in our view, the shoulders and extension of the arterial, the Mercy Ways, right? And so that would qualify, but in terms of some kind of, you know, regional. But in terms of some kind of, you know, regional trail, you know, Kirkland is identified, a trail that has regional significance and related to their TBD. And there's some question marks regarding projects unrelated to arterials that have regional significance, can they be funded by TBD? We're not sure.
Okay. Let's, can you, a few more questions, but then we've got to make some decisions here. Benson?
I just have a couple. What in your research have you found in looking at other TBDs, those who have a $20 motor vehicle tax? Have you found any where they've actually had a kind of sliding scale or two-tier tax where if somebody has a number of cars, registered cars, where they may charge a once-amount? That's one question. The other one is whether or not there's any prohibition as far as providing a sunset provision on any kind of ordinance that might establish the TBD. Because obviously, the whole purpose of looking at this TBD is because of economic conditions on roads that resulted in a, you know, less revenue being generated. So again, if those economic conditions change, maybe perhaps we don't need a TBD as far as a source of revenue. So again, can we impose a sunset provision? Whether you prevent that, correct?
Let me answer the first question, and let Christina answer the second. The first question about a sliding fee scale, I have not seen that, but definitely some cities have set fees of less than $20. So that example is out there.
As far as dissolution, the statute does actually set forth an automatic dissolution. So let's say you establish the TBD and you did nothing but fund, I mean, one project or a series of projects. Once the debt was extinguished or the transportation improvements finished and you did nothing else in 30 days, the statute would automatically dissolve the transportation benefit district if you wanted to dissolve it. Using your example, maybe suddenly we have a lot of extra money, you didn't need to impose the vehicle fee tax, you could also take action as, take action to dissolve it.
But just so I understand that, if we tie it to the TIP, does that mean that once every project we now have in the TIP is done, then it automatically goes away? Or is it a, as we add to the TIP, does it just continue on with the, because we're adding projects to the TIP?
Go ahead.
My hope is it's the latter. Your TIP is, already your six-year TIP gets updated annually. So I think we need to dive deeper into that question, but my hope is that each year as you update it, the projects would carry forward, would carry forward beyond the 2020.
Or at least in the minimum, we can always amend the projects that are covered by it and continue it on if the council, future councils want to do that. And Benson's question is whether we, as a council, wanted to just put a hard stop date on it now and then, so force as a future council to actually validate the need to continue it. So, okay. Couple more questions, Debbie?
Just so I make sure that I'm understanding this from sort of an operational, functional perspective, if we establish a TBD, there's approximately $350,000 that would go into it per annum. Is that money then kept separately and accounted for separately than that which we are using for the TIP itself? Are we running two distinct buckets of funding for what is essentially one common project list?
Yes, although the funds would come into the transportation benefit district and then they would be, if you set up your program for something like arterial streets, then the funds would transfer over into the city's street fund. So it would run, go ahead.
Yeah, I would just encourage the council not to get too far into the weeds on this one. There are dozens of these TPDs already out there, so we're not going to be inventing the wheel here. So I think, I think that if, well, we need to answer these questions here, whether we're going forward with this and when we're going forward with it. And then I think everyone's raised some good questions, which staff will come back with more details on. But even if we don't completely, you know, have everything buttoned down, we have time to get more details before the TBD actually kicks in. And there are just, there's literally dozens of TPDs around the state, so this is...
I agree in principle, yet I think that there are certain points where we do need more information. And I go back to the conversation we had around the tip, where I think pretty much everybody up here agreed that when we talked about a TBD, it wasn't specifically to fund roads or bike paths or X, Y, Z. We didn't want the principle of the TBD to be associated with a very specific project or modal preference. So what I'm just trying to make sure here is that we are not then tied super specifically to, you know, island crestway repaving or, you know, shoulders on the Mercers when we go forward, because that would sort of negate some of the principles that I thought we had, at least de facto, agreed upon. Hence, at least some of my questions, making sure I understand how those work. I'm sure at the end of the day, we can figure out a solution, but I'd like to minimize the gray and the confusion to the extent possible upfront.
Okay. Any more questions before we start? We just have one more diving into this. One more.
I want assurance, please, that the council staff has maintained the flexibility that we could not approve a TBD right up to the, well, September 15th, that you're not committed for a TBD.
Until we actually adopt the ordinance, it doesn't happen. In fact, until the TBD board meets and imposes a fee, it doesn't happen.
Well, I know that we've gone through the planning and projected what the tip will look like with a TBD. I just want to ensure that that's a contingency, that our planning, I guess, would be assumed, to assume that there was not a TBD in place.
Let me try and answer that. As Chip, as Agenda Bill and as Chip and France have already said, we have enough money to fund the TIP through 2017 right now. So we go negative, though, in 2018. The problem is, if we don't build up funds now, there's no way we can deal with a deficit in 2018. So the answer is, if we want to fund the entire TIP, then we need to start funding it now. If we don't want to fund the entire TIP, then we're still going to be fine until 2017. And then whatever council is sitting here in 2017 is going to have to pick up the pieces then and figure out how to pay for transportation projects or what projects they're going to cut. So theoretically, there's enough money through 2017, which means the entire biennium is funded from existing sources. What we don't have is now building up enough money so we can actually go beyond the current biennium.
Well, I agree with you, except for that we won't have funds for 2018. And I'll show you that when I went to my graph.
But also, just to clarify, that also doesn't account for the fact that we found out after we threw the TIP about losing the bus routes.
Right.
And so if we want to actually fund any public transportation, that is not in the tip, and so that is not funded. So we wouldn't be able to fund it even through 2017. We couldn't fund it through February of next year without additional revenue.
Yeah, I mean, depending on how much money we're talking about. Okay. So we did have a vote several meetings ago, at which time, if I recall correctly, it was a, at that time, a 5-2 vote to go forward and direct staff to basically come back to the council at this meeting and present more information on the TBD. So we need to either reaffirm that or determine that that vote is no longer appropriate, that vote is no longer valid. But I, to the first question, really, I want the council to address is whether we still want to proceed with a TBD, which is essentially then instructing staff to come back with an ordinance at the first meeting in September. So that's the question for the council to debate at this point. So Mike, I know your feelings on it, so go for it.
I'm more happy. Ally, can I have the graph, please? While she starts with that, you know, this is a family issue, and it's taking a lot of money, up to $20, $30, $60 from our families. The city manager just sent a weekly update, council weekly update, showing us the status of the pantry, the food pantry, and said the use is going up. So there's still a lot of people, there are still a lot of people on the island that are watching their pennies going from paycheck to paycheck. What we don't want to do is force another group of families in a situation where they need to rely upon government handouts. And this is what, this is a step in that direction. It was stated in the presentation, in the agenda, that since 2009, we haven't had tips that were above zero in the out years. And the deputy city manager mentioned that if we go on a prudless TBD, then in 2017, we'll be underwired and we'll have no way to fund our tip projects. Well, if you look at the bold red line, the bold red line is the tip that was published to us in May 14th. And you'll see, that's right in the ballpark of how we've operated tips since 2009. And what I did, though, is I projected, I looked at June 2009, I looked at what our tip said in year one, two, three, four. The same thing for the May 10 tip. May, for May 10, I looked out at one year, two years, three years. That top line is the outlier. So by adopting a TBD, that will put our budgeting as an outlier on the way we've budgeted TIP. Now, what's going to happen in two years, or one year, two years, is just what you see on that graph, is that we will budget for two years biennium, and then we'll have all these wish-we-have projects in the out years, years three, four, five, and six. There's another way to look at that. It's just that our, we have too many projects to maintain what our budget is. And we need to work, that's what we need to do, is work within our budget to address the issue about where the funds will go. Don't kid yourself. What this TBD will do, will release funds for other lesser priority projects. The TBD project, I have no question that staff, as the deputy mayor mentioned, there are TBDs all over the place. I have no question in the confidence of our staff to execute a TBD successfully and efficiently. We'll get those, we'll get that money and we'll prioritize it to these transportation projects, which will release the funds that were previously identified for other lesser projects, projects that wouldn't pass the criticism of the analysis of the public. You know, I would like to see the, obviously, I'm not for this TBD. I would like to, and I would vote for, I would vote for a TBD, whatever amount, that would go to the public for a vote. And I think that would get the public involved, our citizens involved, that would force us to really do our job in selling the projects. And, yeah. So for unanimous vote, my vote, $350,000 is what, $20? So I'd pay $700,000 for a $40 TBD. I'd support that.
Other council members? Donna?
So Mike, I was the other vote on the council that didn't direct the staff to bring this back, because I was more interested in seeing it come back maybe in 2016 instead of 2015. But now, when we look at it, I think, again, we have some additional information that's even beyond this chart here. And then we're talking about families watching their pennies, which I think is a very admirable and important thing to think of those who are using the food bank and other things like that. I would also imagine a lot of those people are using public transportation, which is the very thing that this would go to fund. And so I am, with the new information that we have passed since the tip, that is going to impact our community in 2015, actually even in 2014, I think it is for those very families who are watching their pennies and many others, that I want to make sure that we do have something, the option to consider a TBD this coming year, so that we can bring back or fund some public transportation for our community.
Other council members? Debbie?
Yeah, Mike, actually, I have to say, I'm going to say, you know, sufficient accuracy, you know, I like your chart. I think it's interesting, and I think that's probably a phenomenon that's not even necessarily specific to the TIP. But that said, when we're looking at the investments multiple years forward as a community, basically, that's what our job is. Our job isn't only to manage for the next one to two years, our job is to manage for the next six, eight generations to come. And I think that's where some of the challenges are, when you're looking with a very short-sighted or limited window of opportunity. And I'll just go back to the utility board, and I look at the list of projects that are there, the vulnerabilities that we have and that we're living with, which can be quite significant to families who have insufficient fire hydrant access, water main capacity, et cetera, et cetera. So when I look at this, yes, I think we do tend to manage to the most current couple of years. But to Donna's point, I do think that the TBD has an added importance now that we're looking at the loss of the metro service. Is $350,000 going to be enough to buy back equivalent? Certainly not. Is it going to be enough to probably even buy back half? I don't know. I've not looked into the numbers. But it's about creating options. It's about helping us plan and create the services for the communities and the families that need it most. And it's also about the demographics on the island, who I think increasingly are interested in multimodal opportunities. And I think back to the roadways and the opportunities that we had when I was a kid. They're far greater now. So at the end of the day, I'm recognizing the constraints we've had, and we do have going a few years forward, but I'm looking at the investments and the community needs that we have two-plus years out, including public transportation and a community that's looking at additional alternatives beyond that of an automobile, and I continue to support the TBD.
We also make a couple of comments. We have been very fortunate over the last several years and have been able to reduce our transportation costs in large part because we were in an extremely favorable bidding climate, and we know that. We also were able to delay a lot of projects. We did not undertake a lot of projects that I would submit were projects that would have been in the best interest of islanders to undertake. We did not maintain our streets maybe at the highest level that we would have liked to maintain them, as you've reminded us on many occasions when we get into the TIP every year. So this is not a situation where we are anywhere operating in an optimal manner. And so at some point, we need to decide as a community where our priorities are and whether we are committed to maintaining our streets, we are committed to supplementing our road and trail infrastructure in a way that addresses the needs of islanders, whether we want to make sure that our streets are as safe as they possibly are, you know, whether we're going to finish a project on the Mercers. And having biked around there once again this afternoon, I tell you, when you get to around 60th and the bike trail or the improved shoulder ends, you know, you really miss that as a biker. And you're looking forward to it when it picks up on the west side around 60 first. And it is just, this always bothered me that we have not finished that yet. And any way we can expedite that, I'd like to see us do it. There are a lot of important projects out there. And so this is not going to be money that's going to be put away on some frivolous endeavor. This is money that is important to this community, and we need to, at some point, bite the bullet and start paying for what the city demands. Benson?
You know, in general, I'm supportive of a TBD. I guess, again, providing resources to fund projects that are needed. A little bothered by potential September timeframe, only because, you know, having the first reading on September 2, and that's the day after Labor Day, I'm just, you know, this is an issue that I think is going to garner a lot of public interest, and I'm concerned about kind of an expedited process. I rather personally think that doing it in December, again, provides the community more time to think about it and to weigh in and to provide, you know, some idea of the public feeling for the TBD. So I guess I'm just really talking more about the timing issue as opposed to my support for the TBD itself.
Any other comments before we go to the council?
Yeah, I've been thinking a lot about...
Yeah, I've been thinking a lot about the different, the changing population on the island. I remember years ago, people saying, "This is a semi-rural place to live. We like the woods, we like the gravel, we don't want curbs and sidewalks and gutters like in a city." And, you know, that was the expectation then. I think the population has changed and is changing. We have people demanding more and expecting more. You know, and we kind of talk about this every time we look at the TIP, and I think it's an evolutionary process. I think it's very important to, since we'll be redoing the comp plan, the transportation element of the comp plan will be very important for us. I, too, voted to postpone deciding about a TBD, and I am persuaded, too, by what Benson said about postponing and not rushing into this. I guess for me, the game changer was the notification about the bus cuts. I think it's critical for us to do what we can to help bus riders, to make getting from the south end of the island to the north end of the island easier. $350,000 a year is not going to do it, but a little bit might help. I think we really need to coordinate, though, looking at the use of this TBD money with the, within the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. And keep in mind, we might need to look at level of service, change the expectation for level of service, and being more realistic about what we can afford versus what we'd like to have. So I reluctantly will support a TBD, but I would like to see it thoroughly aired all fall and decided, so that we would adopt it in December.
By my count, it's, there are five council members in favor of the TBD, one council member opposed. Is that an accurate statement? Okay. So then the next question is whether we do it, so, and just again, just to reiterate what Noel already told you, adopting it in December means it doesn't start being collected until July. Adopting in September means that it gets started collecting in April. So when we originally were thinking about this, we assumed it was going to be starting to be collected in January. So no matter what we do, we're losing the three months or six months. So we're talking about really is giving the public more time to weigh in, and what it essentially means trying to convince the council to change its mind at this point, but, which is, if that's the role the council should be. So if I can get...
Deputy Mayor, you know, and it's sort of your prerogative, the option to do a $25, obviously, something to trip the need to go to the public.
It's not my prerogative, but it's...
No, I... If some other council member would like to see that, I would fill with the idea of a $25 TBD, or a $30 TBD, or a $35 TBD, obviously with the hidden agenda, not the hidden agenda, obviously with the agenda...
Yeah. Mike, what I told you before is if you would actively campaign for that, I'd be happy to talk to you about it. But knowing that you would be very at the front of the line to try to oppose it, I think it's disingenuous for you to be asking for that.
Not disingenuous, please ask if there's someone who would like to do that. Is there anyone who would, you're the deputy mayor?
Is there anyone else who feels that we should consider going to the voters for a TBD in excess of $20?
I'd just like to say that I think it would be a poor use of taxpayer money to spend $40,000 to $60,000 to get an answer on a $350,000 revenue stream.
Okay, so not being anyone else supportive of that, so the question now is whether we adopt the ordinance in September or adopt it sometime in November or December, essentially. Really, I should say, the issue is whether you're going to have it effective in April or effective in July. So those council members who would prefer having it adopted in September and effective in April?
I have a question on that. So why is it September or December, and why not October? Why could be...
Well, September, it's six months. You need six months from the date that we actually, we need as a transportation benefit district board to enact the fee. You need six months to that date, and when Department of Licensing will start collecting the fee, or Department of Revenue, or whatever it is. So it's six months for...
But it could be October rather than December.
Yeah, it could be October, yeah. But the question is, I mean, the question is really September, or October, or December. So those council members preferring an earlier one indicates as such?
I'd prefer an October one.
Are we talking September or December?
It's choice, I thought, with September and December.
Francie, do you have the...
If you want, if someone wants to present October as an alternative, that would be, Mike has said October, I'll say...
Fees will be collected six months after whatever date you pass the ordinance.
If we say October, that gives, that addresses your concern, Benson, of the September...
What I was going to say, that does, because that gives more to people.
Okay.
Exactly right.
I mean, I think December is usually a very bad month to do anything, because people are away, and it's, something always seems to mess up December. So October, do we have any support for October?
I would support October.
Okay. Unanimous on October? Okay. What other questions? Do we need to answer the question now as to what we're tying it to? And if you want us to?
To guide us in drafting the ordinance?
I mean, I, yeah, the, I just, let me put my two cents in. The only thing we control is the TIP. We don't control statewide roads, we don't control regional initiatives or regional priorities. I would personally prefer tying it to the TIP. There's more than enough need in that, that we don't have to worry about state and regional issues. So I mean, I'd feel much more comfortable just tying it to the TIP. Is that...
Yes.
Is that...
I would support that.
Okay.
Can I ask one more question? I support referencing the TIP. I think it was Jane mentioned this issue about the impact fees. Are we not going to include that, or is that something, I don't know what the direction of the council is?
Can I suggest, Benson, that staff come back to us and explain how that would work for multi-purpose, multi-use building, because that's, most of our development is multi-use. So if it's not going to cover the combination residential and retail stuff, then the amount of money we're talking about is almost nonexistent.
And if I might, if we can also find out on, like, for instance, school buildings, if that applies.
Any other questions you needed us to answer, Chip?
I think that's it. So just, so you understand, if, on the October timeframe, I'm totally okay with that, that means we would start collecting fees on May 1st, 2015, which is fine.
Okay.
Okay.
What I think you need to figure out is whether we can, how we work in that extra meeting of the TBD board, if we need to do an extra meeting, or do you actually then instead do it the last meeting, second meeting September, first meeting October, and then run a...
That was my next question.
Run a TBD board meeting, the third, the second meeting in October might be the simpler.
I think that works best, practically speaking.
Okay. If there's nothing else, we're going to adjourn the study session for about only five minutes, and then come back for a regular council.
Well, thanks, Chris. Put me out. Thank you. Put me out.
Yeah. We're convening, we're reconvening the August 4th, 2014 meeting in the City Council. We just completed a study session on Transportation Benefit District. As I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, the mayor may be coming, yet he was delayed because his flight from the East Coast was canceled this morning and he was catching another flight but is not scheduled to land for another half hour or so. So he yet may be joining us depending on when he actually clears the, gets out of the airport. So in the meantime, if you could call the roll, Ally?
Councilmember Debbie Bertland.
Here.
Councilmember Jane Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Sero.
Here.
Councilmember Tonison.
Here.
Councilmember Benson Wong.
Here.
Mayor Bruce Bassett. Deputy Mayor Dan Goss.
Here. Okay, so we'll be going to appearances as the mayor so well says, says so well at the beginning of each time, the rules are posted on the back. You have three minutes. The general rule is be civil, be nice, but otherwise you can talk about anything and bring any matter to the council. So with that, who would like, anyone here for appearances? I suspect there are. Come on up. State your name and your address.
My name is Alice Poyier and I live at 7450 86th Avenue Southeast on Mercer Island. In the recent email update from Deputy Mayor Dan Goss to Mercer Island citizens, he states, and this is a quotation, quote, "Due to the refusal of King County Library System to make further changes, some citizens are now pressing to have Mercer Island leave KCLS and form our own library. The manner in which they have chosen to do this, however, raises significant legal questions that the city is now trying to work through. In its simplest terms, they have petitioned the city to conduct a public vote on forming a new library district without first having asked islanders to vote on whether they want to leave KCLS. Under state law, a vote is absolutely required before we can leave King County Library System. Any new library district would also need to be funded, which again requires a vote. Each of these votes would cost island taxpayers tens of thousands of dollars," end quote. The ballot measure advocated by the concerned citizens and by the 178 citizens who signed the petition for the ballot measure would be rendered unnecessary, thus saving the voters tens of thousands of dollars for a special election if our City Council were tonight resolved to put on the November ballot a measure to de-annex from KCLS so the voters can decide. The privilege of de-annexation is not a radical or far-out idea. In fact, it was clearly stated as an option for Mercer Islanders in the inter-local agreement. It is a major concern to many Mercer Islanders why our City Council has not aggressively pursued this option, considering the widespread objections of over 1,200 citizens who signed the petitions objecting to the closure of our library for up to a year for unwanted and wasteful renovations." Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm Dixie Stanton. I live at 3723 90th Avenue Southeast. Here we are quoting, again, Deputy Mayor Goss. Leaving KCLS will have a dramatic impact on Mercer Island Library patrons if we lose access to the KCLS collection of resources. That's your quote. But he neglects to say that all the resources in every library nationwide would be available to us, including those of KCLS under the National Interlibrary Loan System as they are now. Now, further quote, "It will also be expensive as we need to buy the library building from KCLS and pay off our share of the 2004 KCLS capital bond," end of quote. What is left out of this equation is that Mercer Islanders will spend $6 million on taxes to KCLS next year and will get back less than $3 million of that in library services from KCLS. And buying back our library would mean that the City Council could contract with another library system or with a library management system to run our library for an estimated $1 million a year, thus saving Mercer Islanders millions of dollars every year after we buy back the library itself. In addition, Mercer Islanders would again own our own library and have our own librarians and a library collection and library services that meet our needs while preserving that we love about our library and closing it for a minimal time for only necessary upgrades." End of, end of.
Thank you very much. Bob? Are you gonna quote me, Arthur?
And good evening. I'm Bob Steele, 411 93rd Avenue Southeast. And our quoting continues. Given this, I will continue working with islanders to convince KCLS on the need for further changes to the renovation project as that was the original plan of this effort and the one that, in my opinion, still makes the most sense." Quote, end. The concerned citizens applaud this commitment of Deputy Mayor Goss but also fail to see how KCLS will change the plans since the renovation plans have already been submitted for final permit approval before they are put out for bids and construction begins. In addition, Julie Brand stated at last week's board meeting that none of the plans would be pulled back, even following the board resolution that recognized the new constituted Mercer Island Library Board. And since we have no evidence that KCLS will consider changing any elements of the renovation plans, including retaining the drive-up book drop or building two study rooms instead of one, as Bart Dawson's drawings propose, we urge our City Council to put a measure to de-annex from KCLS on the November ballot before it's too late to save our library. We were initially told that the new KCLS director would begin July 1 and hoped that he or she would be more receptive to Mercer Islands concerned that the former and current management have been. But recently we were told that hiring process was delayed and a new director will not be on board until at least October. And, page two. The citizens of Mercer Island elected you. You know that hundreds and hundreds of citizens oppose the upcoming library closure and renovations. Please represent us. Let us, the voters, decide. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric, are you next there?
I'm Dick Winslow, 3761 77th Ave Southeast. I don't have a lot that's new to say and to some degree it's embarrassing to be here. I think it's the third time I've been here saying something. And the reality is that all of you, almost all of you, your hearts are in the right place. You actually don't want KCLS to spend an extra couple million dollars moving things around in the library and that upgrades are probably enough. That would save us money and time and avoid a prolonged library closure. But the KCLS board and management seems determined to do this major redo. And so that's why, I guess the word I would want to emphasize that some of my partners here have emphasized is vote. Let the Mercer Islanders vote. And we don't really know how they'd vote. Some Mercer Islanders might like to spend that extra money on a major redo. Some, like our Concerned Citizens Group, would be opposed to that and just want an upgrade. Some Mercer Islanders don't know and don't care. But if you give us three months by putting a measure on the ballot in November, then that gives all of us three months to see what Mercer Islanders might think. Mercer Island reporter, word of mouth, posters, leafletting, maybe even modest door-to-door activities will allow the Mercer Island community to express their view more clearly. So all I can say in the end is, if at all possible, put a nice measure on the ballot in November and let Mercer Islanders vote. Thank you.
Eric?
Eric Swenson, 8541 East Mercer Way. Thanks for the opportunity here to be able to say something. I've looked over the remarks that were made at these council meetings since our Concerned Citizens Committee began its endeavor to save the Mercer Island Library from the misguided notion of progress expressed by KCLS in their remodel plans. Indeed, we may be representative of Mayor Bassett's experience when he became involved in local island politics. We were told he became involved when the South End soccer fields were in need of repair and look where he is today. The Concerned Citizens have spoken with facts and data regarding the need to adhere what voters voted for in the capital bond issue and the folly of some of the proposed changes. The essence of these remarks have been more elegantly expressed by Deputy Mayor Grousne, Councilmembers Bertland and Wong, and we're appreciative. We have, in our opinion, exhausted available avenues to stop the misguided KCLS remodel. We appear to be at a point of either capitulating to a KCLS review of what they believe is good for Mercer Island Library or taking more direct action. KCLS, for its part, has publicly stated that it is moving ahead with its plans and has no intent of changing. The City Council, to its credit, has established the Library Board and we are appreciative of that. We're aware that there is a meeting scheduled between Deputy Mayor Grousne, City Manager Treat, Board President Cairns, and Interim Director Brand. This library meeting is scheduled for the 14th, if it will take place. There's a saying among social scientists that you do not believe what people tell you, you believe what they do. We believe that Interim Director Brand's behavior. For our part, we have drafted two petitions regarding a location for temporary facilities and also for the establishment of a Mercer Island City Library. The first had 1,200 signatures and the second, consistent with legal requirements, obtained 173 signatures in just two days. On the latter, the city's behavior is clear. They, they, there have been multiple reasons put forth in the context of protecting the citizens and city why the city cannot obey the law, as been pointed out in our committee's letter to the City Attorney Knight. Our question to you is, what is there that you do not understand about the citizens' feeling about their library? At the KCLS Mercer Island meeting in January, Director Potasik commented that he could not take a packed room of citizens' word but needed it to be more representative. Deputy Mayor Grousne has commented that the movement for stopping the remodel is not broadly representative of islanders. The data provide the opposite. Moreover, he believes by talking with Interim Director Brand that he can prevail. We've not seen much of that to this point in time. Experience is a better guide here, notwithstanding Deputy Mayor Grousne's elegant pleas. The answer is simple. Put withdrawal from KCLS on the November ballot and let the people speak. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Eric. Gary?
Gary Robinson, 6026 East Mercer Way. As you know, I, on behalf of the Concerned Citizens Committee, submitted a petition with 178 signatures asking that the City of Mercer Island, through its City Council, submit to the qualified electors of Mercer Island at the next municipal or special election the question whether this city shall establish a city library consisting with RCW 2712-030. The city clerk sent the petitions to the county for validation of the signatures. The county opined that since the signers of the petition needed to be validated taxpayers, they would have to be validated first by the Tax Assessor's Office. I am pleased to report that while 100 taxpayers are required, the Tax Assessor's Office has validated 115 of the signing taxpayers. The next step in this process will be validation of the signatures by the county and to issue a certificate of sufficiency. We are told that this will take about an hour and should actually be able to be accomplished tomorrow morning, August 5. We hope that you will join us in celebrating this step and support us in moving forward in reclaiming our library by putting this on the November ballot. I might add that the City Council has an alternative. It could also decide to put on the November ballot, withdraw from King County Library System with the attendant benefits of reclaiming our library, saving citizens, and I calculated to be about $4 million a year, providing us with our own librarians and programs again, and other benefits. We ask that you support Mercer Islanders in this quest for their own library.
Thank you, Gary. Anybody else for appearances?
My name is Carol Hengke. I live at 7714 North Mercer Way. I'm here and also my husband is Andy Sinev. We've deferred asking others to speak for us tonight as we know that many islanders have already weighed in with you via email and we would prefer giving the council the maximum time this evening to discuss these issues. Of course, the council will know that we're decision to actually be made at this meeting regarding the sand transit integration that many people would be here to speak on this issue and on our behalf. While I don't begrudge sand transit the opportunity to broaden light rail accessibility for our region or the City of Mercer Island the obligation to plan for and maintain our roads, our downtown core, and our parks, the idea of choosing a plan from sand transit that removes ours and our neighbors' homes when there are other options on the table is irresponsible, unwise, and just plain wrong. It seems to us that if the city does favor this option, as we have been informed by sand transit, that at best you are choosing what you think might be the least bad option. We emphatically say that this isn't good enough. We ask that you continue to explore the other options with sand transit, specifically the option of using Sunset Highway and put to rest the option which will condemn our home. Our home is so much more to us than a piece of real estate and a house. This is not about adequate compensation. We love our home. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? If not, I'll close appearances.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, a question, so, or the City Manager, when will the council receive a brief or update on the ballot request?
Glad you asked that question because our city attorney is just chomping at the bit to provide that.
I like the horse pun. So Katie Knight, your city attorney, at Close of Business today, we received an email from indicating that the county assessor's office had verified 115 actual taxpayers or property owners on the petition that was submitted pursuant to RCW 2712-030. I've done legal research. I've contacted and worked with municipal research services. I've discussed the issue with other city attorneys and I can tell you that given the circumstances with being presented with a petition underneath that RCW and by the fact that we're still part of the KCLS system, so far there's been no precedent with regard to this when they're seeking to get a library system and they already are involved with that. Department of Revenue told the county, who also queried them, that they had interpreted the laws to say the same type of taxing district cannot have overlapping boundaries. It'd be confusing to understand which taxing authority you'd be presenting money to. Given the ambiguities, I've contacted DOR, I've contacted the Attorney General's Office. We're going to ask for an informal opinion from Attorney General's Office. I've also asked Representative Sine if, on the city's behalf, she would present the question to the Attorney General's Office for a formal review of this matter. There's just no legal guidance what to do in this situation.
Well, I don't understand.
And so...
The attorney, finish, please.
Right. So it's, anyway, it's just ambiguous what to do. This is a process question. It's a process legal question and there's no precedent for the case law on it.
It seems like if we're looking for ambiguity, we'll find an ambiguous process. I mean, taxing districts are all over the place or, yeah, especially fire district.
Mike, if you have a question, I'll permit that.
Yeah, my question is, my question is, I don't see the relevance, why that's holding this up, the overlapping of taxing, and I don't see the relevance of there not being a precedent. The issue is, is that they're, our citizens have fulfilled the 100 vote threshold. Let's, let's get the process going versus looking for reasons that it could possibly go wrong.
And first of all, I'm not looking for reasons. It's a process question. It doesn't appear to be legally sufficient. We already have another library. It's the state has come back to say they wouldn't permit this to go forward, so that's the question we're trying to answer. I have no horse in this race and so we're just trying to make sure that it's legally sufficient and that we're not going to spend tens of thousand dollars sending it to a vote when it's not a proper petition. That's the question. That's what we're trying to answer.
Can we get a, what the legal ease is, a stay or something on KCLS to stop what they're doing until...
We have a, Brian Cairns, Kirsten and myself, a meeting with the interim director tomorrow as a pre-meeting to our Library Board meeting. So we are going to, three of us, are you joining, Noel's joining us, I'm sorry, and Noel as well. So we, we're gonna, once again, look, and based upon the resolution that was passed by the KCLS Board of Trustees, which I think you're all aware of, in which they welcomed the Mercer Island Library Board and directed staff to work with them in accordance with the interlocal. We are hopeful that that will be a strong enough signal to the interim director that she will be willing to work with our Library Board and consider potentially further changes in the, in the design. That may be wishful thinking, but we are going to, there has been a change since we last talked with her. The KCLS Board has acted, so we're going to go down that road from that standpoint. But the other issue of the election is, is something that we need to get this one right. And it's not just a question of just saying, you know, go throw it out to the voters because it's not our position to go and just throw something out to the voters. We need to make sure we do this right. And, you know, if, and it's, you know, hopefully, hopefully after Katie has gotten the information from the Attorney General's Office, we'll have more guidance on this and then it'll come back to the council and we'll be told what our options are. But to be honest with you, Mike, right now, we don't even have a validated petition back from the county yet. We have, what we're told is coming tomorrow possibly, but we haven't even received it. We were not able to even put out public notice about it for me to, to rule, to make a decision out tonight because it didn't come in time, even if we had been inclined to deal with it. It's not even on our agenda because we could not even put a public notice out to have a meeting. So, yeah, I, I've probably gone farther than I should go because this is not an agenda item, but I, I think we owe it to the citizens and owe it to the council to understand what's going on here. And as all of us have said all along, no one is happy with the current situation and all of us are trying to come up with a way of resolving this thing. And ultimately, this council may decide that some type of election is what we need to have. KCLS surely understands that that's in play right now and if they're rational at all, they will realize that this is not a road they want to continue going down.
I have a couple of issues with that. Again, the three of you, I appreciate all the work and time you're putting into this. But I, at this point, I don't think it's the prerogative, the decision of the council to make. The citizens, these 115, have already made that decision for us. You negotiating with the KCLS at this point is, is disregarding this initiative of 115 signatures, which by, as I understand, by process gets, gets the ball rolling to make it to a vote. We, this, it seems to me the council, the citizens have forced our hand, the council's hand, to shift from one of accommodating the KCL, KCLS, to one of accommodating what these 150 citizens have initiated through the process.
You may be right, but we're gonna hear from the Attorney General's Office before we make that decision.
Well, that's why I'd like clarification that what we can do... Well, that's why I'd like clarification that what we can do to have KCLS stop and cease, stop what they're doing.
I hear what you said. I hear what you're saying, and it's something that, you know, Brian, and Noel, and Kirsten, and I can think about before tomorrow's meeting.
Well, keep in mind, I think you're walking the authority line on what you can do with the KCLS, what agreements you can get, that you can get at KCLS, given what our citizens have initiated. I understood.
Okay, so, we're going to the consent calendar.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Sorry.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Posed. Passed 6-0. Allie reminded me that we have to do the minutes first, so we should have done the minutes first, so that we have the minutes of July 21, 2014.
I move to approve the minutes of the July 21, 2014 council meeting.
Second. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion passes 6-0. We now move to Agenda Bill 4996, Fire Station 92 Project Update. Noel, why don't you tee that one up?
All right, thank you, Noelle Treat, City Manager. Tonight, Glenn Betcher and Amy D. Dominicus, our project manager, are gonna give you an update on the Fire Station project. As you saw in the last couple of city manager reports, we have had some bumps in the road. There were some mistakes that the contractor made in sizing certain parts for that building that have had some impacts on the speed with which it's built. Glenn and the team have been working hard to get the contractor to quickly remedy the situation, and they're gonna give us a briefing tonight about what happened, where things stand, and what we see coming next. So, Glenn, take it away.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Amy Dominicus is here this evening to talk about the remainder of the Fire Station 92 construction schedule. If you've been following our updates in the city manager's report back in May, you may have noticed that we've been monitoring the potential impact of our rejection of the JSE in the apparatus bay. After considerable prodding, we have finally received a revised schedule from the contractor. The good news is that the date for substantial completion remains early November. The contractor believes he can achieve that. But not so good news for those of us who are involved in the project on a daily basis is, given the contractor's track record so far, there is now no room left in his schedule for any miscues or redos of any kind. That's a concern. We also very soon need to make sure that the contractor is operating the same definition of substantial completion that we are. Our definition is the Fire Station will be ready to move into and begin operating. As your General Bill mentions, we're paying almost $5,000 a month in temporary quarters fees, so that will add up fairly quickly. Within a day or two of tonight's discussion, we plan to send another letter to the contractor repeating our concerns about the schedule, and any of the feedback we hear from the council tonight would be included. Actually, it would be helpful to have that in our letter, I think. And now, if you're willing to stretch your legs for a minute, I wanted all of you to see the schedule. That's on the whiteboard here, just to give you an idea that updating the schedule is not a small task. But I understand that we need, we need to have a microphone. Amy's gonna walk you through this.
That's why, when did you come up? We have this electronically and a PDF, but unless you have the computer screen the size of this board, it's very difficult to see. Basically, what it was, as you can see on the schedule, there's a set of...basically, the start of the schedule, the dark print was the original prescribed schedule, and all the blue print is the corrected schedule. We've identified about 18 items that we think they need to come back and just relook at from a sequencing standpoint, based on the architect's knowledge of the building and how the building goes together. So, there's probably gonna be one more going around on this based on our review of the schedule earlier last...at the end of last week, and he's working on it now. But we wanted to find out before we had any other comments, if you had comments tonight. Basically, what you can see on the schedule is there's a list of tasks, and there's a duration attached to each one. So, some of the tasks are linked, and some are just tasks that are not attached to the critical path. You can see this red line here?
Any item?
Excuse me, any item that's on that red line, which is actually buried under a red bar, so it's a little difficult to see. If it's their mistake, there's nothing as far as on our end from a cost standpoint or time standpoint. If it's their mistake, then they're responsible for redoing the schedule and figuring out how they can still maintain completion. Okay, so you can see that this did take some time, and the contractor actually has their final, final date, is about 14 calendar days later than the original, if you take out the time for Christmas and Thanksgiving holiday. So, it's about a three-week change, but the...oh, I'm sorry.
Substantial completion.
Oh, substantial completion is the date that they can quote-unquote occupy and move in, and then there's usually some punch list items which are related to the finishing up the process. So, the substantial completion date has not changed, but the final, based on the entire project being completed, just pushed out about three weeks. But their contract is tied into the substantial completion date. Yeah, so you can see substantial completion here is now 1031, and the final completion certificate of occupancy 121. If anyone has any questions or comments, I'd be prepared to take those down for you so that we can include those in our letter.
My question was, whether or not the contract has a liquidated damage provision?
We do. $35,000 a day. We do.
And that's triggered if the contractor misses the final completion date?
That's tied to the substantial completion date. Correct. In my past experience, the liquidated damages, it's a point where the contractor knows now that that has potential. So, there's this fine line balance that you're on right now where you want him to hit that date, but you also don't want to cause more mistakes by someone overlooking. The good thing that has happened since then is the contractor's brought on two more project engineers on site, so now there's three people doing the coordination that one person was doing before. And we find that the two people that have been brought onto the job seem to be very capable in their skills, so that has made us feel a little bit better in that sense.
And I need to correct, it's actually a higher amount. It's actually 3,750 a day. It said it at 3,500, so it's actually higher than what I said. On the schedule, I didn't see the information about the undergirding of the wires.
Oh, we are actually meeting with PSC on site on Wednesday. We have a quote-unquote final plan, and we're meeting with them to walk through that plan. And right now, once that plan is finalized, we have time to negotiate with the contractor the amounts that...of work that will not be included in the project, which will be returned back to the city or not charged by PSC, so.
What is it with Fire Station 92 and roof joists?
As far as what went wrong, or...
Do you understand the joke?
No.
The last fire station, the last fire station...
Oh, the upside-down Gullam beams, so, yes.
The roof joists also, so I don't know. Something's going on with that. I assume all the float's been crashed on that?
Yes. We are...there's no more float, so...
Any question in anybody's mind that we're gonna start having rain in October and November?
I don't know if you've driven by, but...
No, the reason I say that is because I did not agree with the change order or the compensation that we gave to the contractor in the front half of this contract for needing extended time because of rain in Seattle. So, I say this with all seriousness. Is there any question in anybody's mind that we're gonna start having rain in October and November?
There's no questions to that.
Okay. Get the definition of substantially completed now, because I guarantee you, I guarantee that's where they're looking to wiggle for more time or money. And I look at you as being the person responsible for nailing that so that the city's interests are protected financially.
I assume you're just using an AIA contract, and...
Actually, Noel, the city did a modified version of the AIA contract that we spent quite a bit of time on, which is helping us right now, so.
Right. Right. Have a little tight contract on this one with the well-defined substantial completion. Thank you.
I take, I mean, I don't know what your definition is, but I take Mike's admonition to heart that we should, we should make it clear that what we think is required for them, for our firefighters to be able to actually be in the building and be using it. So, if there's any question about that in their mind, they know that.
Well, that is not a good standard, to be in the building and using it. I mean, I'm sure, I'm sure substantially completed is not a function of whether our firefighters can get in there or not, correct? Because that's a low standard. You have to be able to occupy.
It's basically, it's, the certificate of occupancy is final occupancy. You can do a temporary certificate of occupancy, which will allow the firefighters to use the building, and then, you know, until all the punch list items are corrected, then you gain your true certificate of occupancy.
Can I ask a clarifying question? To me, it's one thing for a firefighter to be able to go to sleep at night and cook their meals. It's a very different thing for that firefighter to be functional and effective in getting into the vehicle and servicing the community. So, when I'm looking for substantial completion, to me, that is the building that is functional that supports the responsibilities and requirements of our team, not whether or not there's, you know, a bed and a stove and a flushing toilet. I mean, I'm assuming that those are very important, but first and foremost, this is about keeping our public safe. So, I'm just gonna express my concern that, you know, sufficient completion is the ability for our firefighters to perform their duties on behalf of the public in their complete range of services.
And I'm gonna suggest, Amy, maybe we just send them the definition of substantial completion that we have in the terms and conditions, because I think that'll help.
Yes, and if you notice in the letters that we've been including in your reports, we've been forbidding them taking rate out from the contract and putting it in there so that they can go back and make sure that they understand what needs to be done.
Yeah, we'll send that out, but it is tied to the building functioning as it's intended to function. It's not just about someone can sleep and eat there. It's broader.
Just a follow-up. Obviously, I don't think any of us are impressed with the response by the contractor, the fact that you guys had to remind them. Going forward, are you guys increasing the number of times you get to meet with them, monitoring their performance? How's that?
We currently, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
We currently meet on a weekly basis, and then if there's anything pressing that needs to be addressed, we will go beyond that weekly meeting and meet with the contractor as well. And we've been identifying upfront early if we see a potential problem or something that could be a potential problem. We're trying to throw that out in front of him so that he understands and is aware of the potential impacts. I think he's aware of the impacts, but we're, we're working as a team in that sense, and he has actually stepped up to the plate. He's actually fired through subcontractors, and we have new ones on board. So, the new subcontractors on board have actually performed above and beyond, you know, the call of duty for what's been asked of them in such a short period of time. So, the contractor's from Oregon, and I think that may be where some of the sort of missteps have happened because he hasn't worked with a lot of the subcontractors up in this area.
Do you feel that you need to meet with them more often or weekly?
I'm not sure at this point that will be helpful. I think the architect has been meeting with them in that sense where the hand-holding has been happening, and he has been great on helping them get through this mess above and beyond sort of his call of duty as well, and we have to thank him for his efforts as far as what he's done to help this contractor, holding hands, getting him through this project. It is a small site, small building. There's a lot of mechanical and electrical equipment crammed into a very small space. So, that's why we were so adamant about these joists coming through the way they needed to come through, because we were so afraid of what was gonna happen further down the line if this was not corrected properly.
Other questions? Just to confirm, in terms of the costs, right now, we're still ahead of the game in terms of change orders?
We're still ahead of the game. We've actually denied two, and they accepted it, so we've been diligent in our sense that just because they come out with a piece of paper that asks for money doesn't mean they're going to get it.
And they've not given us any force majeure notices?
Not at this point.
Are we expecting any, or...
The only one we had was in the beginning during that whole, it was a three-day impact based on a weather-related thing, but it was part of it was we had a change due to existing conditions on the site that were unknown until they dug them up.
I think the staff has already, including yourself, has already identified the concern regarding quality control as we go forward. So, do we rely, I assume we rely upon our development services group to do the inspections, but do we also rely upon the architect to do more frequent inspections? Because DSG only gets called out when they're ready to show off the work rather than on a regular basis.
Yeah, we have a special inspector on site who's not part of the city group, so their inspections are coming through, and that's the Corzain Group. The architect is doing inspection every week and has produced a report based on anything that he has seen that's non-conforming or not up to the way the drawings have intended it to be built, so. And then, once again, if something is going on that needs his eyes on the site, they're there. So, it's been, they've been very cooperative in that sense.
The architect fees are still within the original?
They are actually all within. The architect, based on what happened with the initial bid process, has really stepped up to the plate to make up for that unfortunate circumstance.
One question.
So, the QC inspector, he is paid by the GC or by the city?
No, by the city, and that he reports to me.
Lifters, do you have another question?
Yeah, I just, how much, how much money is left in the contingency?
We are, and I want to use these words carefully, because we know the contingency is above and beyond the contingency based on the bid. So, right now, we are negative $18,950 based on, we haven't touched the contingency to date. So, we actually...
So, you've still got $18,000?
Still have $18,000 and...
Before we go into the... Okay, so what I would ask is that if, we obviously have no more meetings in August, I think it's important that the council be updated again in early September, just so we keep on top of this. So, I'd appreciate it if you could just schedule a five-minute update for the first meeting in September and just...
Yeah, certainly. We'll keep, we'll come back for an in-person meeting, and then we'll continue to do our regular updates in my report that goes out, and as this issue evolves, we'll be sure to keep your eyes, and if other things come up, we'll be back to make presentations here as well.
Okay, great. Amy, Glenn, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. We have now Agenda Bill 4995, Proposed Sound Transit Bus Immigration and Parking Solutions Status Report, and it looks like we have our esteemed city manager who's going to...
Yes, just like old times.
Just give your name and position.
I'm Noelle Treat, City Manager. I've forgotten how to work the computer since I was last here. It should be coming up here momentarily. So, what I'm going to be presenting tonight is just a quick status report on the Sound Transit Bus Integration proposal and some of the related parking discussions.
Well, I should just emphasize to the council, we are not here to make any decisions tonight. We're here to understand what options have been presented, what additional options might be out there, and ask questions, but we're not here to, to choose any of these options or to indicate a preference for any of these options. This is a fluid process, and right now, we're still in the process of getting information. Also, this council has made it very clear to Sound Transit that we're not even talking about options until we solve the parking problem. So, and that, that message is, has never, has not changed. So, I just want everyone on the council and, and anyone in, from the public to understand that this is primarily an educational opportunity for the council, for the public, and for the council to ask questions.
Yeah, absolutely. This is only an informational update, not proposing any decisions tonight. There's not a lot of new information, so, so much of this you've already seen if you went to the Sound Transit Open House, for instance, but I wanted to just pull it together for you in, in this form, and then advise you of a couple of new things and talk about some next steps. So, just quickly, the background about how did we get here? As you know, we've, the city's been in discussions with Sound Transit about solving our commuter parking problem for a number of years. There was a focus, for instance, on the Walgreens site for some time. That project fell through. We kept talking about other options, and during the course of those discussions, late last year, Sound Transit proposed to put this bus intercept on Mercer Island. And it's been, it's been called a couple of different things, bus intercept, bus turnaround, bus integration. I think now they're sticking with the term bus integration, so that's the one-
I'm sorry, what did you say? It was introduced to us?
I think we heard from them it was late last year, when they first raised this as a possibility.
The reason they raised, they didn't raise any of these opties, any of these-
Not the scenarios, no.
No, they raised the, the, this came up in the, they suddenly realized that if they were going to continue to run buses into Seattle, they had a problem with the buses coming off the, off of I-90 and going into the city, that they had, they couldn't have buses and trains on, on the same roadway. So, they needed, all they were having, they figured out they had to run buses through the regular streets in Seattle, which was, they determined was problematic. And that started getting them to thinking, you know, is there an alternative? And that's probably the genesis of this whole idea. So, that, that, I think it's called the D-2 or the-
Yeah, the D-2 is the, is the ramp that comes from the downtown bus tunnel onto I-90.
I guess the reason I bring that up is I'm asking the relevancy of the FEIS not having the bus turnaround on Mercer Island, but having the D-2 exit.
Yeah, I mean, that, that is, that is in fact the so-called, I guess you'd call it the status quo is the FEIS, which would have the buses continue on into Seattle. And they, they're now saying that they would like to change that.
Right, and they, they probably will have to do some supplemental environmental work, and I'll talk about that in a minute, if, if they're going to go forward with something like this. So, of course, as you know, it's, the bus integration is a lot of the I-90 bus routes turning around on Mercer Island and exchanging passengers with light rail here, rather than going into Seattle and doing it there. So, Sound Transit raised this idea. It was not that one they received by us. We wanted, we said, well, you know, you need to solve the parking problem. They said, well, let's initiate a study, look at what the options are, and we'll keep talking about parking.
Well, can I ask you a question about that? Now, the parking mitigation was to compensate us for loss of the center roadway. Before we go down there, let's, let Noel finish it, and then we'll, we'll circle back to that and other questions.
Yes. So, just, just quickly to recap, the study that, that came out, it was attached to your Agenda Bill, it was provided at the Open House. What the study says is, right now, we have about three hundred and fifty buses a day. If they don't, once light rail starts and they reduce the number of bus routes, there'll be about two hundred and twenty buses a day. If they were to implement this bus integration idea, we'd be back up to around three hundred and forty buses a day. So, that's, that's the numbers they use. So, certainly, you know, you can see there, without the integration, we'd be down to two twenty, and if, if they do something like this, we'd be up to three forty. The study, as you know, had four scenarios, and, and all of them had issues that are of concern. And one of them has, as you know, the taking of private residences. Another one would take a portion of our sculpture park. Traffic is certainly a concern across all of them, as well as impacts to town center.
I'm going to jump in here one, I'm not going to say one last time, but I would like going this step forward, and when it's my turn to speak, I'll present the data, but I would ask that the staff not present the, the information on a twenty-four-hour clock, but focus in on that time which is relevant, i.e. the two rushes in the morning and the evening. And you get, you know, some pretty amazing increases in bus-
Yeah, I think you're probably right. The, the, the number of buses is different, but the, the mountain volume at different points in time is-
It's very relevant for this step forward. I'd prefer not to see that twenty-four hour clock.
And just to clarify, my, my presentation here today is not to give you a detailed technical analysis of the study, just a quick overview, so I can talk to you about next steps, okay? All right. So, just a reminder, scenario one was just the baseline. In the study, scenario two was the scenario where buses would be routed through town center. They'd come in on Eightieth, go through town center, and then back out onto Ninety. Scenario three, of course, involved a turnaround on Sunset. That's the option that would involve taking some of the sculpture park. And then, of course, scenario four was the roundabout on Seventy-seventh, which would involve taking two private residences. So, those, those have been so far the focus, the main focus of the study. In terms of the public discussion to date, you talked about, this idea was originally presented to council by Sound Transit at a January first study session. We then went into our planning session, where you talked in more detail about it. Sound Transit came back on June sixteenth and presented the study, including all those scenarios. And then they did the same at the Open House at the community center, where they invited the public and took comment. Just to emphasize what the deputy mayor has already said, the council has not agreed to bus integration, and the council has not selected any preferred alternative should bus integration move ahead. The council position has been that only if we get dedicated Mercer Island only parking, would we even entertain any of these concepts. And that's, that's, we've taken a hard line with Sound Transit on that to date. And so, that brings us to the question of, well, what about the parking? What can they do for us on the parking, if, if anything? When these discussions started, our position was that we wanted to acquire ownership to the existing parking ride lot and have that for city control, so that we could make it available for residents. Sound Transit has resisted that. They've cited a variety of different legal and policy reasons for that position. And so, we haven't to date gotten very far in those discussions. So, we started looking-
Pause for a second.
Sure. Why are you interrupting my presentation?
You know, you go away for a moment, everybody says, oh, it's a BD. I think their parents are already finished.
All right. You're welcome.
My apologies for interrupting.
Are you ready?
Carry on.
Okay. So, I was just saying, we've, the city's advocated for ownership of the existing parking ride lot, but so far, Sound Transit hasn't really been willing to entertain that idea. So, we started looking at some other options as well. The latest development is this idea that maybe they build at their expense additional parking in the community center parking, or on the community center property. And the, the concept, though, would be that in the interim, that additional parking would be open to all transit users, while the South Bellevue parking ride lot is closed for rebuilding and for staging of light rail. And then after that point in time, control of the new parking at the community center would revert to the city, and we would then be in a position to control that for resident only or to have priority pricing, or however we might want to manage that parking. The, the property that they're looking at at the community center is, is that parcel in Gray, just to the north of the existing parking lot. That's, that's the area that they've hired a consultant who, just this last week, was beginning a study to find out what, what kind of parking might be able to go into that area. Right now, as you remember, it's a, it's a mound, a mountain, it's called Grass Mountain at times. Dan has agreed that when we remove all the dirt, we can put it in his backyard. And so-
I just want to plug the former site of Grass Mountain.
Yes, yes, you'll get a plaque. So, anyway, so they're looking at what, what could they do there in terms of surface parking or maybe two-story parking? Because they've just hired their consultant, we don't really know much yet about feasibility or cost or how many spaces, but, but that's what they're going to be looking at. In terms of next steps, I want to emphasize that the bus, the scenarios that, you know, I showed you two, three, and four, those, those are still under discussion. We've gone back to them, asking for them to look at a scenario that would move the roundabout on Seventy-seventh further away from the houses and maybe negate the need to take, take any homes. So, that's something they said they'd look at. Metro Transit recently came forward with another idea they want them to look at. So, we're meeting, the group is meeting again next week to talk further about scenarios and try and see if there's some alternatives to what we're already looking at. The other thing I wanted to point out is, at least as far as we know, Metro is still saying they're undecided on this whole concept. They're not sure they like the idea of having their riders changing between bus and train in, on Mercer Island instead of the downtown Seattle bus tunnel. So, they're, they're still undecided as well. So, so there's still, there's still some question marks around this whole proposal. And then again, on the parking, Sound Transit has initiated the analysis. They think they'll be done by September, which I think would line us up to come back to council, to update you on that work, get some additional input from our public, and then as these things come together, talk about what, if any, decisions you might want to make about either a parking agreement or the bus integration proposals. And then going forward, we'll certainly continue to provide you and the public with information as, as it becomes available. So, that, that's my quick status report. Any, any questions?
Yes, how did this relate to the, the promised parking that could be in a TOD that we've been talking about for a long time, that, that Sound Transit promised in exchange for loss of the use of the center roadway?
Yeah, I think that would all-
Is that still in place?
Yeah, I think that would all be part of this discussion, and I think part of what we have to-
Is a separate thing, no? I mean, this is, this is on top of that promised parking?
Not necessarily.
Yeah, remember that the TOD, when Sound Transit was talking about the TOD, they was, they were never willing to talk about dedicated parking.
Correct.
This is absolutely the very first time they've been willing to talk about dedicated parking. And a part of it is probably because it's on city property that makes a difference. And so, it's, but for whatever reason, they're not talking about dedicated parking, but I don't think they have any idea that they would, in addition to this, also fund a TOD project, that they would-
I mean, I could see both of them going forward. I mean, that would be nice, but it's not like-
Yeah, and right now, there isn't a viable TOD project.
Right.
And, and like, like the deputy mayor said, this, this is the first time they've really engaged in the possibility of them, them funding some kind of parking that we could ultimately control, because with the Walgreens site and everything else, they were very clear that that is open to everyone. So, that's, that's what's changed.
And what about other sites for the interchange? Are they looking at not just Mercer Island for this integration, but South Bellevue or not?
Yeah, they, they, our understanding is they did look at South Bellevue, but due to some of the traffic concerns in and out of that parking lot, they didn't think it was as feasible. They think our site's the ideal site if they're going to do this. So, this, this has been their primary focus.
The same as the main now.
Right, right.
So, is, is option one still really alive or not?
Yeah, option one is the status quo right now.
It's the status quo, yeah.
Is, is option zero is the, is the status quo, option one is the assumptions for the FEIS.
Yes, and, and option two is no roundabouts, but driving all the buses through town center.
The other problem with South Bellevue, they're already doing some bus integration at South Bellevue with other lines. So, they've, they've got other buses coming into South Bellevue, so that's creating an issue of putting further bus integration in South Bellevue.
Can you go into more detail on that? Why, should we not, can we not have, still have that on the table?
But it may very well be on the table, but I'm saying that one of the reasons, one of the reasons they've given for, for not pushing South Bellevue as hard as Mercer Island is because they, that's the traffic issues that Noel said of, of coming off of Ninety. It creates a problem for them, and they, they feel it creates a bigger problem to come off of Ninety and go up the Bellevue Way. Plus, they've got other buses which are already doing that, are already dropping people at South Bellevue and switching over to the Transit.
Well, I think we should ask staff to have Sound Transit show us where that's not a practical solution. I mean, I, I appreciate taking their word for it, but what, this is critical for the island. We need them to show us where it doesn't work, because I'll show that with the, with the council. Go ahead, Jane, hand that, we don't need to put it up, but, I mean, the differences between bus volumes at those critical peak periods are huge.
And I'm happy to ask them for more information about their analysis on South Bellevue.
No, good. The information, Noel's, Daniel's, Dorn, show us why you can't absorb these bus transfers that you're proposing on Mercer Island.
Debbie and then Benson.
So, I have two sections of questions. The first one is actually probably a request. What, what has concerned me about this process in particular in the beginning, and it's a request, you know, I think both to all of us as well as to Sound Transit, there have been more comments to the tune of, I have heard Sound Transit say, or I have heard that the city council's preference is X. And it, it seems to me that there's a tremendous amount of either assumption or miscommunication or in conflict communication that's going on out there. And I very much appreciate the board that you had that said, there has been no decision made by council, there is no clearly stated preference. And from what I understand, there are still options that could be further explored, particularly with Sunset Highway, which have perhaps not needed to paper yet, but with the assumption that the city council had said no. So, you know, this, this is not constructive communication pattern that somehow we as a collective have found ourselves in, and I think we all owe it to the community, in particular to the private residents and Sound Transit, to make sure that we're clear. The second thing that I would request, that you request of Sound Transit is, when they do talk about these different options that we have, they do not mention dedicated parking as a precondition for a bus interchange here on the island. And they, and I've talked to them about that and asked that, and they, you know, there's, there's some vague commentary that's made, and I think it's really important that if we're going to go forward in the spirit of equal partnership, when they communicate with our public or with any other entities out there, that they are very clear that there is a precondition that's associated. That helps people understand some of the very important parameters that are around this conversation. And then, question that I have, I have multiple questions, but I'll stick with one right now. What I understood originally was that there would be an executive board meeting of some sort late in August, in which there would be decisions that were made about, A, whether or not to pursue this, and or B, which option they would recommend. Has that now changed, or is end of August still a critical decision point for Sound Transit?
No, that's, yeah, that's, that has changed significantly, because you're right, when this was initiated, August was a drop-dead date. Now, the latest that they've told me is they're looking for a general thumbs up or thumbs down from their board sometime, maybe as late as December. And if they get that thumbs up or thumbs down, they will then initiate the update to the FEIS that they think they would need to do to do the environmental work on a selected alternative, and then that would be done probably by April. So, their, their timeframes have shifted considerably. And I think part of that is they've recognized they do need to do some updated environmental work on this before they make a final decision, and that's, that's part of why that's stretched out.
And I appreciate that they're complicated, that there's a lot of due process, there's legalities, there's public input, et cetera. What does concern me is that there are people's personal references, or residences that are being batted about in this, and I can imagine it creates a great deal of ambiguity and stress for them, to the extent to which we can at least clarify or eliminate certain options in advance of April, I think would probably be the least that we could do, if at all possible.
Benson?
I want to just echo a little bit of what Debbie just mentioned. I think when we got all these emails, albeit many of them read the same, it was just concerning to see comments that somehow that the city council had expressed a preference. Maybe I missed that meeting, because I clearly had a, my recognition is that we never did. And so, I think to the extent you presented up here, I think we need to make sure that that message is consistent. that that message is consistent and clear to Sound Transit. I've had other dealings with Sound Transit, and they are a very, send them down, man, but it's a bureaucracy, and so you really need to get things in writing, and you've got to be consistent and just pursue. And I guess I will echo and support Mike's comment that we need to have, if they're going to say a particular option is not viable, I think we need to see that in writing. And I guess, you know, there's two things I saw in the study again. One of them is this idea of having the roundabout at Seventy-sixth, and, you know, they basically said, there's some positive things there because we can have perhaps more bus layovers, or more buses, I guess, that would lay over, but there were some issues regarding the topography and what have you. And that was all they said. And so I'd like to see that one explored because I would take it away from the residents, would also not impact our parks. The other one that I found kind of curious, and I realize that, you know, probably there's a lot of opposition to it, but I found it was curious that Metro, in their comments that were, I guess, dated in March of 2014, seemed to show a preference for having the bus layover on Eightieth. So I thought that was kind of a curious thing, that again, that got short shrift by Sound Transit. And so I realize that, you know, they mentioned concerns about traffic diversion and what have you. My question to them would be, has anybody done a traffic study to see what kind of diversion impact it would be? And so I'd just be persistent and ask the questions and don't let them off the hook with simply giving verbal answers. And then lastly, I'm also intrigued by this parking notion at the community center. I think it could very well be a win-win situation. I think if they pursue a discussion with you folks, which I hope they do, I think you have to talk in terms of other traffic mitigation because you can imagine the amount of traffic now that will be going through that neighborhood and to the community center. And so I don't know if that issue has been-
That issue has been raised, and what we've asked is that their study that looks at the feasibility of the parking, additional parking, also look at traffic flow and how that would impact the neighborhood and how it would be mitigated.
And how it'd be mitigated by them?
It's on their, yes, this is at their expense.
Mike, I'll come back to you in just a second, but let me get a word in edgewise here. So first of all, my apologies to all for being late. I promised the deputy and the city manager I was not going to be late because I had a flight that got me in at noon today. Here I am. So my apologies. To the question, the comment that both Debbie and Benson have made about, is there a council preference for an option? I've been asked by both the reporter and the citizens, whose houses are in jeopardy in this case, what my preference is, and told both of them frankly that my preference was for option four. And that came from a, being in the middle of this process, trying to figure out, Noel, forgive me if you've covered this ground already, but, you know, the original concept as expressed by Rich Conrad was, let the buses come off the off-ramp and do an immediate U-turn and go right back onto the freeway, so that there is no dwell time whatsoever on the island. And what we've done is, and of course, Sound Transit offered, well, let's run through the town center, and we thought, that doesn't make a lot of sense because it impacts a lot of people. How can we constrain this as much as possible such that it has as little impact on the community as possible and yet achieves the aims that they're trying to achieve in a functional manner? And this option four was essentially the endpoint of the conversations that have gone on so far about trying to achieve that minimal impact on the community by keeping them to just one block of North Mercer Way. Now, we certainly didn't, in our early conversations, say, oh, and take a couple of houses in doing that. We said, that's a good, that's a good intersection at which to turn them around. Sound Transit's study was what said, no, there's not enough room there unless you take homes out to make the roundabout. So that's how that evolved. I certainly was trying hard not to say that I was speaking for the council when I said that that option appealed to me. And certainly I, like everybody else, have gotten the letters from the public saying that this one of the families is very distressed about this, and of course, their neighbors are distressed about it too. I think this can be part of an, I guess the thing I equated it to a bit was, if you'll recall back with the school district and how they were going to move forward, Gary put forth the idea that there should be a new middle school at the North Mercer campus early on. Became the strongman proposal, which everybody shot down, but that led to the much broader conversation within the community about, okay, so if that's not the right solution, what is the right solution? And I'm inclined to see the silver lining in getting beat up about this and saying, well, let's let this be the beginning of the conversation, recognizing that we certainly are not at a decision point by any means. We can entertain new ideas, we can figure out what makes the most sense from a standpoint of everyone. Perhaps it means pulling together a group to look at options. But for the moment, to be clear, I expressed an interest in option four, certainly didn't intend to speak for the council, don't think I said that I did, but it may have been construed that way. So if it was, my apologies for that too. With that, over to you, Mike, you had your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So on that parking lot schematics, schematic, before we get too far involved and before Sound Transit makes assumptions, I think it's going to be very relevant on the elevation look at it, especially for those neighbors.
Yep.
So-
Yeah, that'll be a key part of, I think, what their consultant needs to-
Let's get an understanding quickly on what the elevations will be before we get too far down the road as far as the practicality of it. So Councilmember Braun made reference to the mitigation from losing the center lanes. I will suggest that we are at a baseline of $6 million for mitigation of the center roadway. That's the number that had been thrown out. So, you know, if it costs $7 million, let's say, to do that right there, well, that's only a $1 million mitigation from the way, the way I look at it. Does that math make sense?
I hear what you're saying.
Okay. And let's not kid ourselves about this idling thing, about the policy. I've been around troops long enough to recognize a policy that's not going to be followed, and I substantiated that this afternoon, that the non-idling policy, was that given to us by Sound Transit or Metro?
Metro.
Metro. It is a policy that doesn't get communicated or enforced where the troops are. So I was down there at the Bellevue parking lot, and I left at 10:50. When I got there, a bus, two buses were idling, one left a couple of minutes after I got there, another remained there the whole time, and I left 50 minutes after that, continued to be idling, as you can imagine, even had the umbrella out with the air conditioning going on and everything. And then there was another bus there from 10:26 to 10:37. I've got numbers if somebody were so inclined to investigate more, but it also, from 10:26 to 10:37, was idling. So Councilmember Braun, I think that was your question. Just because they have that policy, I think it's still an issue that will remain, it should be assumed that buses coming on the island will idle regardless of whether there's a policy or not. And I'm glad to see that the Sunset option will be looked at. I'm glad to see that we will explore the Bellevue turnaround on that, and that's all I have.
Dan?
So first, I want to thank Carol and Andy for actually raising the Sunset option and raising another option, which I'll mention at the council. I had the opportunity to meet with them and their neighbors a week ago, and they're the ones that said to me at the time that, asked why Sunset Highway was not viewed as sort of a modified option two. So instead of going on Twenty-seventh, go on Sunset, which would mean you'd have to break through next to Tully's to make that happen, which would obviously impact the one sculpture there. But it's, that is, it's potentially something to be looked at. They were told by Sound Transit that the city had nixed that at some point in the process, which none of us can recall ever having been asked about, so we're not sure why Sound Transit said that. So they had suggested, they also made another proposal, which I thought was intriguing, and I know that Noel is looking at that and communicate to Sound Transit. They pointed out that the city actually owns a parcel just to the west of their property, which is, it's a steep slope area, so it would require a fair amount of fill to do something with it, but it is a substantial parcel of land that may be, and I'm sure also Patrick is familiar with the property, it's probably a storm drainage area, so you'd have to put pipes through it, and it's not, it's not a simple thing. Literally just to the west of the two residences, if you look on a map, there's a triangle-shaped piece of property. If you walk down there, I'd never focus on, between the Sneffin property and the condominium that is to the west, that's actually city-owned property apparently. And so the question is whether you can even do something less than a rotary. I think when I mentioned to Bruce, he was suggesting, well, maybe you wouldn't even need to do a rotary there, do some sort of pullout that the buses could just use to turn around, so it would involve less of a project there, because ultimately, we're only doing this for the buses. So I thought that's another option, and again, I thank Carol and Andy for raising that as a possibility that we can look at. And I also understand that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Noel, that Metro is also looking at another issue, another potential option on Eightieth, which they haven't, that's about that.
Yes, and I don't know the details of that yet, but they've raised another option. We've raised the Sunset option and the option of filling in that little ravine area and using that to the south instead. So we have a meeting with Sound Transit coming up, where we're going to talk through these new ideas and see where we can go with them. But Metro has some new ideas too that we haven't heard yet.
So, and the reason I make, raise it is that, as Bruce said, this is, that in effect, going out with this one option has triggered a lot of other conversations on other options. So whatever his good intentions were-
I have my arrows in my back right now.
We've gotten, we've gotten a good result in terms of forcing, forcing people to look at more options now and getting input from our citizenry, which I've always said, none of us have monopoly on good ideas, and so getting input from other citizens and ideas from them gives us things to look at. So it's, we're moving in the right direction, I think, in terms of exploring options.
Thanks. I also just wanted to make sure that we're really clear when we're talking to Sound Transit, which I'm sure we all would want to be. When we talk about mitigation, to be very specific, and I think some of those are talking about, very much about what is the traffic pattern for pedestrians as we look at all of these different options. Because I think as we're looking at some of these, you know, Sunset Highway, for instance, you know, that's a walkway there, and so whatever we, you know, explore about, any cost that they put in, we have to make sure that they're including very clearly what is the pedestrian pathway and those costs. And so to make sure that we are, you know, not just saying mitigation and they're thinking nice plants, but that we're talking really specifically about, in particular, pedestrian usage.
Yeah, good, good point.
Debbie?
It is for some degree of hesitation that I'm bringing this up, but when we've talked about dedicated parking with Sound Transit, I think the de facto volume of parking we've been discussing is essentially going to maybe even 400 parking spots, which is essentially the capacity of the parking lot that we have right now. Yet when we look at what the potential demand is for parking at the north end, when light rail is there, with the cuts that we're receiving from Metro starting immediately, clearly the parking potential demand is significantly greater than the 200 to 400 spots. And when I think about whether it's a community center or any other place, is this the time for us to begin a discussion with the community about even sharing costs with Sound Transit? To the extent that perhaps initially it is a one-story to two-story parking garage, but this would be the time to create the facilities or the foundation to take it underground multiple stories. And I want to make sure I'm saying underground so that people don't start to be concerned about the views and the issues that exist for the neighbors right next to Grass Mountain today. And of course, and I'm not mitigating or denying the issues that that would bring to the neighborhood, but at the end of the day, 200 to 400 spots would be terrifically welcome, but it's not going to solve the problems and what I perceive to be the demand that we're going to have, you know, eight to 10 years from now. So I'd like us to be, in these discussions with Sound Transit for the immediacy, but also we can, how we can be particularly smart in terms of multiplying their dollars or adding our dollars to create greater capacity at the north end, be it at the community center or anywhere else. Because this is, I think, you know, a once-in-the-multiple-decade opportunity.
I'm going to give a partial response to that. If you wanted to go in a different direction, I'd say-
No, same direction. I think it's important that we take a long-term look, of course. And that's why I wonder, is there any potential for continuing discussions about a TOD downtown? Is that going nowhere?
Well, right now, you know, as you know, we've taken a look at a number of properties and nothing really emerged.
There's no ongoing discussion with anyone at this point?
There are some property owners that are still interested, so there are still some potential discussions, yeah.
There is still one project this council has also talked about on multiple occasions, where there's at least 50 stalls of commuter parking that have been offered, as we're aware of. So that is still out there.
Thank you.
To Debbie's question, so a personal opinion, I would be hesitant to, and I don't think you were going there, but you might want to clarify, open the door to Sound Transit doing a parking facility development that is both for Mercer Islanders as well as a parking facility that is open to all, because I think, certainly from the public, and my perception is that we, we could put in essentially an infinite amount of parking here, and we would become full because we're so ideally placed relative to Seattle. So in my opinion, I don't think we want to be headed down the path of more parking that's open to all. It serves the needs of off Islanders, but I think it's detrimental to the needs of the community. More parking that's open specifically to Mercer Island is potentially of interest, but of course, you quickly get into who's paying for that. And so, maybe you just want to clarify where you were going?
Yeah, no, I think those are some good points. Definitely dedicated Mercer Island parking. You know, again, I'm just looking at what we're facing with Sound Transit within even the next six months relative to where we might be 10 years from now, if people actually wanted to get on light rail and go somewhere. So I do consider it to be Mercer Island-only parking. And what that means is, it might be time for discussion within the broader community about whether or not the city should be paying to build a parking facility or add on to an existing parking facility. If you charge $2 a day for a Mercer Island resident to go park at what would be dedicated Mercer Island parking, how long would it take us to pay off another 400 parking spots? And I'm not advocating this exactly, but in my mind, this is the type of future capacity discussion that I'd like to have now, so that when we're looking at what has to be a multimillion-dollar project coming our way from Sound Transit, we're smart in terms of planning for potential capacity in the future. But again, Mercer Island-only parking.
Which might lead to the natural next question of, can a TBD be used to pay for another level of parking? $350,000 a year, you save up for six years, you, you know, you get a couple million.
I'm not sure. Do you know offhand, is that transportation improvement, I don't know if it includes parking, do you?
I don't think it does. I think you'd have to argue it's a regional issue, so that's something we could check into.
Maybe, yeah, we can look at.
Anyone else?
This question Debbie's raising. Just to make folks aware, so whether Sound Transit goes forward on this will probably be influenced by the August 14th Sound Transit brief to Issaquah, which I plan to attend, but just for situational awareness, the staff may want to go to that also because- But just for situational awareness, the staff may want to go to that also, because, you know, Issaquah connects the dots and recognizes that they have to unload and get in line, walk, get in line, and if they don't like that, that may play to our benefit. That's August 14th.
That's good heads up, Mike, thank you. Anyone else on this? All right, thank you, Noel. So forgive me, I'm walking in the middle of this, I was sort of imagining I'd let it go until break, but then I didn't even have a seat, so it's all just been kind of curious. Are we moving to other business now?
Yes.
All right. Councilmember absences, we had one. I don't know.
I'm going to excuse Portugal.
Yeah, do I need an motion to excuse for that? Okay.
You're just late.
No, just blatantly, grossly late, all right. I've apologized, that's all I've got to do. Any upcoming absences of which we should be aware?
I'm absent on the 15th, September 15th.
And missed the TBD?
Where's, oh, there's it, there it is. So I'm going to ask that both the TBD and the 594 reschedule, if there's any desire to reschedule. I'd hate like heck to miss the discussion on both those.
All right, let's complete absences first, and then we'll come to schedule, and do that unless your absence is contingent upon whether the schedule changes or not, which I'm guessing it's not.
No, it's not.
All right, any other, so you will be on the 15th, any other upcoming absences? No, okay. So planning schedule.
Yeah, so right now...
September 2nd teen, September 2nd.
Second teen.
But after the 1st teen, the 2nd's looking pretty heavy, so I'm still trying to figure out how to balance that.
We just lost TBD.
We did, oh, you're right, so that does help. But then you'll see that once we get into October, we're pretty much full-on into budget mode. So the few remaining items of other types of business, we're going to try and get through in the two September meetings, and then we're off into budget. That's all I've got.
Okay. Mike's got a question on the table of moving 594, so let's tackle that first. There were those who asked for it to be then...
Maybe it's better to try to move that to September 2nd then. Larry did move it, for Mike's sake, to move it to September 2nd.
Yeah, we can have it ready for the 2nd.
Yeah, we just need to let the proponents know.
Yeah, we just, we have to make sure we have enough time to do, do we have enough time to do that? There's a special notice we have to publish.
Yeah, I'm just gone.
We can, Far and I can get it together, but my only question is just based on what you remember about the timeframe, do we have enough time? I forget how many days in advance.
I think it's 10 days, so we would have enough...
We can pull it together. All right, well, we'll plan on the 2nd.
All right, and if you can't, is the October?
No, I think that's, I think that's...
Okay, we'll get it together for the 2nd. Unless legally, we can't do it for the 2nd, we'll get there.
And then this, so I missed the TBD discussion, is that moved at this point?
No, it's not. What we had agreed to do a few minutes ago was to move it from the first reading from the 2nd to the 15th, with the idea that we would not actually adopt it until sometime in October and implement it, so it'd start collecting effective May 1st, if it passes. So, but that was, so we basically had pushed it off by one meeting. To do it, to accommodate Mike, we would have to go back to the more accelerated schedule in October, do everything one month like you were going to do in September. So that forces us into the budget period. But if we can do it, we may need a special meeting in October to make that happen. We already have one meeting in the school district, we can do that. I mean, the answer is, based on what we discussed before, to meet that schedule, we can still do it, but we'll have to do everything in October. And it's definitely possible to do to accommodate Mike's request.
Noel?
I would point out, there's actually three weeks between our September 15th meeting and October 6th. So, not that I'm advocating for it, it seems that there would be...
We could do a special meeting at the end of September, just for TBD. How long are you going for?
A week.
Or you could slot some budget stuff in there, too.
13th through 19th.
I think this helps. As long as we...
We just have to watch about the Jewish holidays we're going to run into.
If we can get the final action in that, in October, then the collection will start, the state starts collecting the first day of the 6th month, so whether you adopt it October 6th or October 20th, it's still, May 1st is when it would still start collecting. So we have that flexibility.
Yeah, just checking when the... Well, I think the answer is, we can probably do it in October.
Okay.
And maybe potentially to, for Debbie's point, schedule a special meeting the end of September, since we have an extra week in September, it looks like.
Okay, Mike, are you okay with that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Any other planned schedule topics?
Just wanted to make sure, Ally, you got that, special meeting?
Yeah, well, yeah, I'm just concerned, because we also have a tentative hold for a budget special meeting, if that's needed.
And my only comment was maybe we...
And the issue is, you actually have three meetings for the TBD, because you've got the first reading, the second reading, and then you have to have your TBD board meeting. So we're adding a special meeting somewhere anyways. So we may need to really look at that, because I know that Chip would like to observe one of the October Mondays in case we need to spill over on operating budget.
We could have a TBD meeting after the city council meeting, too, same night, if you wanted to do that.
Yeah, we could do that.
Yeah, we should do that.
We close and we open, yeah, we could do that. Okay, all right, we'll figure it out. Thanks.
Okay. Board appointments, we have none, council member, we do have a board...
No, 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 that's on the, that's on the schedule, sorry. Just wanted to point out that it looks like in October meetings, we're doing the job with the 210 and the 180 and putting in realistic time. But I have noted that sometimes we have, you know, 30 minutes, for instance, for the library discussion, or we know that's going to be two hours, or we know that's going to be longer, and that at a minimum, we at least anticipate the reality of what that, even though it might then look like we have a six-hour meeting, in reality, we usually end up with an eight-hour meeting. So just if we can put in some, a little bit more real, accurate times, in the right-hand column, and/or hold us to the times there and start checking in at, when you say, when 45 minutes is up, say, 45 minutes is up. Would we like another 10, just like what we did with the executive session, so just to...
We're five minutes on budget, let it go. Yeah, I like that. Okay, no, good, good point, we'll be more mindful about that.
Well, you know, this, so it comes down to whether the council wants to police itself that way or not. And, yeah, historically, the will of the body has been to not do that, so if you want me to be a policeman, I can, but I just need everybody to agree that that's the ground rules.
And I'm not, again, not implying that we necessarily end discussion, but just like we do with the executive session, that we're, we make a conscious decision that, yes, we want to spend another 20 minutes talking about it, so that we start, we're just aware of...
Sort of more disciplined.
More disciplined.
Okay. Note to self, cut Tana off. All right. Councilmember reports. Benson, you want to start?
Just a quick reminder that tomorrow, from 5 to 7, you should join me at the Sculpture Park, and it's the 7th Annual National Night Out. And so time to discuss about crime prevention and emergency preparedness, so it's a good time for education and just community building. And it's close to my home.
Drink to Benson's after.
It is, just to add on that, it is, I think it's going to be a great National Night Out this year in particular, because we're really trying to encourage people to come down, either if their neighborhoods don't have one, or if they live in the town center, to make the National Night Out occasion at the Sculpture Park a very large community event, so encouraging people to come on down. Ooh, and they'll be...
Debbie's? I believe it is Wednesday, there's a public meeting regarding renovations or potential renovations at Clark. I'm double-checking if it's Wednesday, not Thursday, in case I'm giving my dates wrong.
It's the 7th.
Sorry?
It's the 7th.
It's the 7th, and it is at...
Yes, it's at Clark Beach.
At what time?
Do you have that handy, Ally?
Groveland.
Groveland, yes.
I'm going to send everybody to the Rockham Park, that's even better. Well, it needs renovation as well, but it's different time. So it's at Groveland, on the 7th, at, is it 5:00 or 6:00? Okay, I can look it up. Come back, check in with me at the end.
And is it a swim party as well?
Yeah, stick your knife in the pier and watch it sink in.
You're going to get that, or without that?
I'm looking for it, yeah.
It's not on the website, so I don't know.
Okay. Dan? We'll come back to that.
I had the pleasure last night of going to Shakespeare in the Park, Two Gentlemen of Verona, and it was one of the most fun Shakespeare performances I have ever seen. And the city is the sponsor, is one of the financial sponsors of it, but they had a huge turnout and got a standing ovation, and it was just spectacular. So I encourage everyone to go down and see that, they've got several more performances in the next several days or weeks, and it was just, just really, they took a play which is not known to be one of the great plays of the world, and then turned it into something which was truly enjoyable, so.
Which one?
Two Gentlemen of Verona.
There's just four more performances, August 7th, 8th, 9th, and 10th, at 7:00 PM.
Okay, Jane?
Another thing the Arts Council is doing, in addition to Two Gentlemen of Verona, is the mostly music in the park continues this Thursday, 7 o'clock, Mark Whitman Band, American Rhythm and Blues, Bring a Picnic.
Anything else? Okay. Mike?
Just some, I talked to the city manager about the hot dog roast that we're having at the central business district, but let's, after that thing is done, let's kind of really look and see whether it's promoting neighborhood awareness throughout the neighborhood, throughout the island. That seems very focused, in that we've changed the policy that we used to do, you know, we'd all disperse and we'd hit all different neighborhoods, and when I say "we," the council. So, yeah, I'm sure we'll do a fantastic job with the free hot dogs down there, but mind you, that comes at the expense of us, the chiefs, and everybody dispersing throughout the other neighborhoods, and we still, and, so it is not, I talked about that, it is the whole...
We're working on it. Yeah, we had a great conversation about it earlier.
So the, I had a briefing with Sound Transit, Ron, if you recall, I asked Ron from Sound Transit if he'd come back to me on that schedule, and he was very nice to do that with several of the engineers, and a very interesting brief on where Sound Transit with East Link and Washita with R8A, where they are. And they made me hopeful with the schedule, still a lot to do, but at least hopeful with the brief I received from them.
Hopefully which direction, that they're going to close later or finish earlier?
Well, are you talking about R8A or East Link?
I'm talking about closing the center roadway.
I am, I should have, hopeful, the schedule that they gave us, with the completion of R8A in sequence with the beginning of East Link, and then not moving the 2023 complete date further to the right, they gave me a level of confidence that what they showed us is with proper planning and the probability of the engineering challenges that there is with East Link happening.
Did you come away from that feeling that 2017 is the right, that there's no more slack beyond 2017?
To move, to keep the lanes open to the right, yeah, I don't see it hap, I don't see it going any further to the right, meaning, yeah. And that's a functional R8A with the fire suppression, and the fire suppression is very sophisticated, which leads another question to our responsibilities on that, and I can bring that up to you offline.
Okay. Noel, you have something?
Yeah, just to follow up, the Groveland Park Dock and Shoreline Improvement Meeting is going to be Thursday, August 7th, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM, at the Swim Beach at Groveland Park.
Okay, a couple things. First, Deputy Mayor, thank you very much for phoning in for me on short notice, much appreciate that. Obviously, meeting went well in my absence, I don't see the chairs overturned or anything else that...
Yeah, we're done, yes. Well done. We're going to National Night Out. Yes, come to the city's National Night Out if you don't have something in your neighborhood, but by all means, get something going in your neighborhood. The great place for everyone to be meeting is with their neighbors in their neighborhood if they can get something going. If you don't have something going in your neighborhood, come see us and get a hot dog, but otherwise, this is National Night Out in your neighborhood. And I think that's all I've got. Thank you all. We are adjourned.